To the United States of America and to Rick Wadler for which he stands, one mission unwarranted and invisible, the diversity and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as we gather grateful for the journey of learning, we pause to give thanks for reaching this milestone of 100 days of school. Bless our students, teachers, and staff with continued dedication and enthusiasm. Guide us as we navigate the path of knowledge and growth. May this day be a reminder of our shared commitment to education in excellence. Amen.
...
Here.
Robin Riley.
Here.
Hannah Rollins.
President.
Judy Truitt.
President.
And Summer Sheen.
Well, move on to item number two. We're going to start off with our presentation of the Employee of the Month and Friend of Education Awards. And we'll start out with our Certified Employee of the Month, Lynetta Rochelle from West Middle School.
Okay, I've been trying to lose my voice all day. I'm trying to get it back, so we'll see. Lynetta Rochelle is being recognized as the Certified Employee of the Month for February. She is truly deserving of this recognition. She is a vital resource to every counselor in the district. She is always willing to take the time to help and share her experience with others. Our students especially benefit from Lynetta's caring expertise as she helps them when they need someone to talk to or when they are in a crisis situation. West Middle School is fortunate to have Lynetta in our building.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next presentation is the Support Employee of the Month for Barbara Jack at West Middle School.
Barbara Jack is being recognized as the Support Employee of the Month for February. Barbara Jack is the best coworker. She helps in every way she can. She also takes the time to show you things if you ask her a question instead of just saying, "Oh, I'll just do it." She is a jack-of-all-trades, no pun intended. My absolute favorite thing about Barbara is when a student asks for help with math, she is so thorough in explaining to them and she's very passionate about it. Barbara is a valuable asset to West Middle School family, and I can assure you that that's absolutely true.
Hannah, if you don't mind, all of those West teachers are very special to me. Each of them. All of those ladies back there are responsible for creating this monster. I did literally sob in every one of their classrooms when I was learning to become a teacher. So I either did my observation hours or student taught, or they groomed me. So I really appreciate them being here. It's really special.
Now we now be responsible.
He celebrated when I left.
Our Friend of Education Award is for Marsha Shields. Marsha Shields from volunteer at Trump College.
All right. And Marsha is a retired teacher from Ponga City Public Schools. So, Wes, you're gonna love this. Okay, here's what she's doing for us. The staff and students at Trump Academy of Excellence are excited to present Marsha Shields with the Ponga City Public Schools Friend of Education Awards. Mrs. Shields is an incredible lady who comes every week and works with small groups of fifth grade students. She brings all types of hands-on materials to help our students grow beyond the fifth grade math curriculum. Marsha shares her love of math with them and they adore her. Leah wrote this, "Mrs. Shields, I think you are so helpful to us because when we go to sixth grade, we will be a step ahead in school. You work calmly with us and you do not get frustrated with us." Axtin wrote, "Mrs. Shields is amazing because she is calm. If you have trouble with a problem, she will talk you through it. She is helping us get better every day. I am so glad I got chosen to be in her class. She needs with every fifth grader at Trump so much." She just cycles. This is her second year. And finally, Maya wrote, "I love Mrs. Shields because when she helps me on a question, she takes her time and helps me to understand how to do it. I also love her outfits. One time close to Thanksgiving, she wore turkey shoes." L, I got to tell you what Eli wrote, "I believe that Mrs. Shields should be nominated because she is an amazing teacher. She is never mean and never raises her voice. She made advanced algebra the easiest thing. That is why I and others believe that Mrs. Shields should be nominated Employee of the Month." They said Employee of the Month, but hey, we're going with that. Okay. Thank you.
We'd like to take the photographs of the award receivers. And if you'd like to, you could say please, but everyone would be welcome to say, but this is what we're getting at.
This remedy.
Lynetta, the Ponga item number four, which is a presentation from Jenkins and Kemper on our annual honor report. And that's you. So I believe that Jason can be sent up there with the microphone. Yeah, okay. Is that it?
Yes, thank you. Well, my name is Michael Kemper. I'm one of the partners with Jenkins and Kemper, CPA's out of Big Speed. And this is the first year we've done your all's audit. I'm gonna start on page four and go over the independent auditor's report. And then I'll jump over to the summary of auditor's results and go over what other programs we tested this year, as well as any findings that there may be. And then at that point, if you all have any questions, let me just answer that and ask. So on page four, this is the independent auditor's report. The opinion on your financial statements is the second paragraph down, qualified opinion on regulatory basis of accounting. So we're required to provide you with two opinions on your financial statements. One is if you are reporting your financials under generally accepted accounting principles, which most schools in Oklahoma do not. So we have to give you an adverse opinion on the financials under that basis. But that's perfectly normal. That's just the way, that's just the way it goes. And then what you're reporting under is the called regulatory basis of accounting that the State Department of Education is kind of under. Under that basis, you receive a qualified opinion because it does require fixed assets to be reported on your, on your financials. But like most school districts in Oklahoma, you do not do that. So that's, that's normal. So the, the opinion states that except for the effects of the fixed assets not being reported on the financials, the financial statements referred to in the first paragraph present fairly all material respects the assets liabilities and fund balances arising from regulatory basis transactions in each fund type and counter of the district as of June 30th, 2013. So that's a lot to say that we just, that we didn't have any issues as far as the, the presentation of the financial statements, everything balanced, with no issues or questions. So now we're gonna jump over to page 45, summary of auditor's results. And this, this kind of goes over what, what we just went over, but also a couple of other things that I'd like to mention. Number seven on that list is the identification major programs. So each year that you're a single audit, which if you spend more than $750,000 in federal dollars, you have to have a single audit. So each year, we have to choose based on risk assessment which programs to test. And they kind of get rotated. They have, the larger programs have to be tested at least once every three years. So, so this year, we chose the education stabilization fund programs, which are your ESSR, your COVID-related programs. Child nutrition fund hadn't been tested in a couple of years, so we tested that. And also special education program. Those were all required to be tested this year. At the bottom of the page there, you'll see, as far as on the financial statement side of the audit, we didn't have any reportable conditions, nothing that would have been required to be reported in the audit. So that's good. No, no major issues or material issues there. And then as far as the fines and crushing costs under major federal award programs, for those three programs, we didn't have any issues for those either. Everything looked really good on those. So, page 46 deals with any kind of prior year findings that it might have been. As you can see, last year, there were no material findings or reportable conditions. Nothing to address under that. Does anybody have any questions on anything that I went over?
Did you come across any things you'd like to see different or better things?
I think the only thing that we kind of made mention that wasn't a major issue, but the receiving and the activity fund, just kind of there's some subtleties as far as the way, the way it's being done right now is you kind of have these receipt ledgers for each classroom, and that works pretty well. But there were a couple of instances where we thought that it would be good to hand out individual receipts for like larger items, larger dollar items, so that each, there would be an individual receipt for each purchase, basically. But otherwise, I think we didn't see any issues there. Your activity fund, our custodian is doing like an annual review of each of those sub-accounts on our own. So that's, that's a great internal control right there. So, yeah, we, we didn't have any major issues with any of that. Just kind of suggestions.
Sure.
Thank you.
For 13 years, for how long I've been around, I'm sure you saw it, it's always said we were really, really good.
Yeah, I think you, I think you all have.
We were just about to go to standard that she wished everybody was at least good to work. Did you say the same thing?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think you all have some really good internal controls. I didn't have any, any issues with getting any of the information I needed. Everything reconciles. So, yeah, I think, I think you all have done a great job.
We need to keep Eric around for a little while for new Kell and Mark.
I think she's had a good job.
Any other questions before?
It was about half and half. I did notice on page three.
Yep.
Our superintendent and our chief financial officer, or new weekly.
Yeah, those, those names are, that's as of June 30th, so.
June 30th this year?
Uh, 23, yeah.
Or 23? Shelley was still.
Still.
30, that was her last thing.
So this is just to make sure that everybody knows that those are the people in charge here.
You and Eric have.
I just.
You came for. Out of that one.
Now we're.
Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Kemper? All right, thank you, Mr. Kemper.
The only thing I need from you all is that auditing officer page signed, or it would have been, I brought a copy of it. Eric, you read it all?
This copy, I know it's awesome.
Um, if you want to sign it later and just.
Yeah, we got it.
You can see you all can hear me later.
Thank you, Mr. Kemper.
Sure, thank you. Y'all, I'm good. Thank you.
For drawing them?
Thanks.
Moving on to item number five, Superintendent for Potential Board Discussion.
All right. It's good to be here this evening and this month. Nancy is off supporting our girls wrestling team. They wrestle in regionals tonight, so I hope we have a good update from him later on. But I wanted to give you a little bit of a overview of what's happening with the 59th legislature and as it pertains to Ponga City Public Schools. This is kind of near and dear to my heart. Actually, one of the things I get really fired up about each spring is when the legislature goes back to sessions. I feel like it's a, it's a good opportunity to either advance good bills, and it's also a good opportunity to try to help educate our elected officials on bills that could have an adverse impact on public education. So a few things that I think are very first important to know is on February 5th, last Monday, that was the first day of session. That was when our governor gave his statement of state address. I'm gonna have a little bit on that here in just a minute. These dates don't really change outside of just the day of the week they fall on. But the process stays the same each year, where bills must go through the committees, must be through the House, first House of origin. One of my rules of thumb that I try to tell people is really not to panic about anything until spring break because if I then, as bills get through either the House or the Senate, go to the other side of the aisle, that, or the other side of the chamber, is when you really start to know where the rubber meets the road on what's actually going to be considered this year or not. And then we matriculate the major version. So on the Governor's statement of the state address, if you read the paper, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing that he did, but just really talking about what maybe implications for Ponga City Public Schools may be. One of the two big telling things was the governor proposed a flat budget. And he made sure explicitly say he doesn't want to see an increase in any state agencies from last year compared to this year. If you remember, Common Education had the most or the largest increase funding increase in Oklahoma State District last year, and that was primarily funded with teacher pay raises. And that, if you read between the lines, he proposed a flat budget. So that, that could have implications on what we look at for estimating next year. He also wants a income tax cut. And I put it in parentheses again, this would be his third call for an income tax cut. He's asking for a quarter of a percent cut. Looking at the estimated cost of that, that would be about $280 million price tag in Oklahoma. You know, the legislature does have about half a billion dollars of new money they can appropriate. But if you're looking at economic factors across the state, I think I talked about that in this meeting a few months back, where economic indicators are showing a decline in tax revenues being collected. So we have some concerns with an income tax cut, and what that, how that could impact state services. And if you remember State Question 640 in Oklahoma requires a super majority of both chambers, 75% to be able to raise any taxes or revenue. And that's only happened once in history. I think it took a teacher walkout to do that the last time that happened. Um, yeah, they called for charter school expansion. He wanted to be this, the largest, the largest number of charter schools. He wanted Oklahoma to be the largest state in the nation. And he had a vision, cast a vision of high-performing charter schools across the state. I think primarily, he drilled between the lines, was really looking at Oklahoma's city metro and how they utilize abandoned school buildings for charter schools. He did call out a Norman charter school, which happens to actually be a charter school underneath the Norman Public Schools umbrella. It wasn't a standalone charter school. And I've talked to the Norman superintendent, and he said, "Yeah, the governor got that one wrong." But this is something to note on, on that note. Higher education consolidation, this could impact Ponga City Public Schools. He's called for a review of this. If you remember anything, in the last 10 years, we've actually had a consortium that reviewed this at the state level, a task force that was meant to, it was called by the Chancellor of Higher Education, where communities and counties and regions had delegates to review the higher education structure and system. I participated in that. And ultimately, what came away from that was maybe we can lose some programs around, but we still have the same number of colleges and universities that we did 10 years ago when this commission was called. So I don't know if NOC is on that. NOC has a unique position in the higher, in higher education in the state of Oklahoma, and that is the only land-grant institution set aside in the Oklahoma Constitution. It is constitutionally founded. So they would have to have a lot of red tape to be able to close or consolidate that campus. But it's on the forefront of that. And I think with technology, the way it's changing and adapting, if you look at the higher education landscape, even in our own community, universities in our state only last remain universities.
Will they get credit for they come closing?
I don't know if he took a little take credit for that or not. That's an interesting tribal, tribal school.
He's gonna pose.
Yeah. One of the things, one of my elected officials sent me was, when I, when I talked to him about some of these key deals, he said, "Don't forget, the governor gets to propose, and then he gets to dispose." So I thought that was a funny little quip there. So he's, he has each, and I think if you watched it or read it, the very first thing he talks about is trying to win over the Speaker of the House and Senate, approach him. The last few years have kind of broken down, or whatever the governor's proposed, legislature wasn't having anything to do with it. And actually over.
The House is poised, it's tax cut. The Senate is just dead.
And that, I think that's gonna be on the forefront. Where higher, where Common Education funding was on the forefront last year, I think you're exactly right, tax cuts are going to be the battlegrounds this, this session. I hope one be good. Could be. It could be. Some hot topics, I just think that just drilling down, education savings accounts are gonna be a big forefront for Common Education. We've had some leaders in both chambers come out and say that, one, we should do away with the limits on the education savings accounts. Right now, it's capped at $150 million a year, what escalates up to $250 million in three years. There is an income cap on the qualifying for the voucher as well. And there did some calls, including from the governor, that we should get rid of that cap. Our state superintendent is also advocating for that. Other leaders in the Senate and House, I know our local leaders are advocating for more of a pragmatic wait-see approach. Let's review the data, let's see where that money's going, how it's being allocated and utilized. But I think you're gonna see a lot of legislation this year that talks about that, maybe some of the unintended consequences or maybe some red tape that comes along with taking that government money. Teacher recruitment retention, obviously is a big issue for us, is we try to improve that teacher pipeline. There's a lot of calls for different ways to improve student outcomes. I think Delaney and I, well, I know Delaney and I met this afternoon with COSA and talking about graduation requirements and maybe updating, enhancing those, looking at changes to the age gap report card. I've talked to this board about inflationary costs, especially as it relates to our building insurance, property insurance, where that's tripled over the last four or five years for our district. That's happened across the state. I mean, it's happened in our homes as well on a personal level. But we have a real challenge as a school in how we afford those costs without making an impact on the services we're providing our students and our community. And then teacher pipeline, you know, we've got some innovative higher education programs. I think even Ponga City Public Schools has done some innovation, innovative programs with the Teach PC program, with our internship program, of how we can get kids turned on to education as a possible career field, help inform them, educate them on some of the benefits of being a teacher, try to shift that narrative to encourage more people to consider it as a profession. Because I think a lot of us still do enjoy the profession more than arts, but it sometimes gives a bad rap in the public spotlight. So this is where it gets kind of cumbersome at the beginning of the year. There was 2,005 this session, which actually is one of the lower numbers in recent memory. But when you add on to that 3,500 that are carryover, the bill does not die. It has two years to be rehearsed. So there's 3,500 that did not die last year. So COSA, SSBA, they're tracking of these, I think about 500 are education-related. And I want to really kind of drill down on a few that I think would have some interesting implications. It may have some legs to see through. The first one is removing the district matching teacher empowerment program, Senate Bill 1256. If you remember this, this is the State Department of Education's enticement bill to recruit people into the teaching profession that have either left profession or out of state, or have not taught a number of years. Part of that program requires districts to match that. This also is the incentive pay for teachers. So it would require districts to identify up to 10% of their staff that would qualify for up to, I can't remember what the limit was, up to additional. Do you remember what it was, Zach, on the teacher power? Was it $10,000 a year or something like that?
It may have been. I know, I don't remember the amount because it was one that on the OEA side of things, we are not fond of that because it's merit pay and how you decide fairly who gets that. And we had issues with that, you know, rather than group pay for everybody, is our stance.
A lot of districts I'm hearing from, there's a few in Oklahoma that do do the merit pay, but have identified like teacher of the year that gets the merit pay for the district. So it's, that's just an interesting bill. Senator Pew is the Chair of the Education, Senate Education Committee, so I do think that has legs. The next one I think is important for this, this board to know, and something we're really talking about at our state level, is the carryover cap for general funds. As you know, we had that waived for the last few years while we had an influx of federal funds. So districts would have an opportunity to get those planned and spent and move forward. That cap, that carryover cap limit does not go with it like this year, but next school year, that are, Senator Pew's being on low control and advocating for low control and thinks that the boards in these communities should decide how much is a fair amount to carry over. But one of the things we're talking about as superintendents is, is should there be a limit, or do we need to consider the implications of a large carryover? It will be hard for educators to go to the Capitol and pay for more funds if you've got a 20, 25-year bond balance, just sitting in a bank collecting interest. So this, you know, it's just kind of looking at it from both sides there. We've got to struggle and have a discussion. This is what I've kind of hinted around with this board, and there's, there's several different versions of this bill on both the House and Senate side. This is a two-year pilot program that would require schools to declare themselves cell phone free. And by doing so, you would be able to qualify for a pot of additional funds. Some deals that I've read show different tiered levels for school our size to qualify up to additional half a million dollars more in annual funding in one version of the bill. Others would be just different grand amounts to either purchase equipment that could store phones in. It could be administrative nightmare or task, and a lot of responsibility on the district standpoint. But I do think this one has some merit in that I think it's gonna see some good discussion either at the local level and state level on what are the future roles of cell phones in schools, and should we consider that being something that is a thing of the past, or does it, do they bring more bad than good, or do they bring more good than bad? So it'll be ultimately up to this board and, you know, our community to decide how that, how we want to navigate that, if we want to qualify for additional funding that way.
Whenever you do put those committees together, working on, there's lots of, lots of teachers and I think his parents, and so make sure we're getting as much input as possible.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think what would happen is once that, if after spring break we see that's got legs and some momentum, it might be something to be considering, getting it grouped together, and people may start looking at that to be able to educate and inform you all. If that's something this board or our district would like to consider. Senate Bill 1521 would modify school resource officers. Right now, we have limitations on who qualifies to be school resource officer. This would remove some of those limitations so that we could actually hire retired officers, which I think could have some potential for us. This is another one that's got a lot of chatter, and a lot of schools are a little concerned, not so much for us, but virtual days would only become for emergency use. We have some districts in Oklahoma that are using virtual days as an instructional day on Fridays, or to kind of create some different creative calendars. This would outlaw virtual days and only be able to use for, there's like three different instances, weather, like a disaster of some sort, you know, or I can't remember what Thursday was, you know, like utilities going out or something, you know, just that you could only use them for emergency day. Then Pew also has another one out there for teacher pay raises. This would be very similar to last year's, except it doesn't appear from 3,000 to 6,000. It would follow the same years of experience level for entry levels, teacher 1,500 up to 3,000 more for your most tenured teachers. House Bill 2320 would lift the earnings cap for retired teachers. It doesn't completely lift it, but it does double it. So I think it would attract more teachers who retired to come back and double dip a little bit to help as this teacher pipeline rebuild itself. Graduation requirement updates, this is a show bill that it's actually with the committee, it's scheduled with the committee tomorrow. This one's got a lot of support from a lot of corporate factors, the State Chamber, a lot of regional higher education institutions are really supporting this. This would add, basically at its core, a fourth math requirement, two graduation requirements. In conjunction, a lot of superintendents are talking. In conjunction, a lot of superintendents are talking and, and school leaders that if we're adding a fourth math, there should be some increased flexibility of some other items that we can fit that fourth math in. Right now it's already a tough bill for kids that wanna be in career tech or athletics or orchestra um to be able to fit all of their extracurriculars in while still giving academics to others as well. So uh, we talked about different flexibility things, whether that could be lifting the foreign language requirements or changing um, uh, refine arts possibly um requirement into something that would be able to accommodate a fourth math. Uh, but, but, but it's got a lot of players behind it that wanna see that happen. These A through F accountability changes, I think the big thing we were seeing on A through F accountability changes is this rule they push on attendance being a factor on school accountability. Uh, that's one thing that schools really don't have a lot of influence on, they control on whether kids are sick or kids are in the seats. Uh, we have, we have a lot of influence on what our teachers are teaching, how they're teaching, but if those children aren't there, it's hard to say that that school's an effective school if you have children that aren't good to schools. So we're talking a lot about how we can either adjust as accountability changes or what's the best measure to show that schools are either being effective or ineffective. This one's interesting. Got a lot of chatter that if a private school has taken the tax credit or accepts it, then all of the students in that school need to take state assessments. Um, that's basically at its core. So um, all the students, all the assessments that the public schools have to give and comply with, this would see the private schools having to comply with those assessments as well. Um, a big thing for another Pew bill, he's on it with this, a lot of RSA changes. Um, he's shifting a lot of targets for the third grade to fourth grade, changing some different tests, what tests are qualified, which tests do not qualify. Um, that's exactly caused some big type implications in ours. For you all, this is an interesting one. It's also getting a lot of chatter, moving board member terms from five years to two years and capping at six, six sessions. So term limits on school board members with board elections, two board elections every two years. Uh, which would be, I, I, in my personal opinion, I think it takes about five years for a board member to learn everything that's going on. I think this could be disastrous in a lot of ways and create a lot of, I think it weakens boards and puts more responsibility on administration and um I think it would be very difficult to get people to commit to being volunteers and running for board seats if this was to see its fruition. So. I'm not a negative favor of that one. This is an interesting one too. That's getting a lot of chatter is on superintendent searches. It would require a public board to create a public uh request for proposal and then the board would have to publicly name three finalists um before picking the final superintendent. Uh, Oklahoma's one of seven states that does not have a public announcement like that. And um, I heard a couple of superintendents talk that have applied out of state uh for positions and they may not have told the board that they were applying, but were named as a finalist out of state and it kind of created an interesting board dynamic and a relationship in their community with their name was released publicly for a position on that. So. Uh, I don't know where anywhere else that that's required in, either in the job world or even, I think in higher ed, they do sometimes do that in presidential searches, but not all the time.
Is that in the result? Lawsuit.
This is actually filed, um, both of these, the board term limits and superintendent searches, these are all from the Senator from Bixby. So I don't know if there's something there. Um. I, I don't know that. I don't know that. So it might be, Robin. Um, there's several bills, I didn't, I couldn't list them all, but there's bills on South and Senate to move board elections to the November general election date. And that's been on, that's been historically something that legislators tried to tackle or attempt. Um, informed them that it shifts, in my opinion, it shifts board races to become partisan races. And the board seat should be a nonpartisan seat, that we should be advocating for education and what's best for our kids of our community. Um, and moving it to a general election date, I haven't figured that that could uh become a very partisan thing very quickly um on that deal. So. One of the big things we'll be doing, and I appreciate this board's support, is advocating at Capitol. Um, so COSA and OSBA moved their uh touch base meetings to internships during the session, which requires us to be down at the Capitol um at nine AM. I, I do think it matters being down there. Um, we have lots of good conversations with our elected officials, both from our district and who are not in our district. Uh, just in fact, um, you know, our Senate Pro Tem, Greg Turek, this is his last year as Senate Pro Tem. Today they just announced the new Pro Tem elect, Senator Greg Portney out of Ada, um, which is fantastic. Cause I have a close relationship with Senator Portney. Uh, he was in my leadership bookworm class. So I'm looking forward to working with him and advocating on behalf of education moving forward. But uh, last week I had an opportunity to speak with both Coleman, Latrell and Piper about some of these bills, some of these hot topics that are hidden right now. Um, and it's just, it's, if we're not down there telling them what's happening in education, someone else is gonna be in there to tell them what's happening. And it, it's good to just have that flip side of the coin there and just be a constant reminder that you're watching, we're watching. We have a responsibility to make sure that we take care of our kids and our community. So. Um, and also our OEA ACT is gonna be down there advocating as well. We appreciate that. It's, it's one thing to get the administrator's perspective, it's another thing to get the teacher's perspective. So um, I think there's power in both of that. So. Uh, I know we've talked a little bit, our local ACT, about how we can unify our voices and make that a good bill. And I think Mr. Murray's got some dates scheduled and getting key teachers down there. So we appreciate him getting that done. I will continue, I'm not gonna try to bombard our staff unless we get really big hot topics that get closer to session. Right now it just, there's just a lot of spaghetti thrown at the wall. We don't know what's gonna stick yet. So once we get, uh, we kind of get closer to the session, the next few weeks, probably mid-March, we'll start getting calls to action through staff to let them know what pertinent bills are out there that would have an impact in their classrooms. Um, one of the things I, I had the opportunity to speak, leadership Pong City, and I talked to him about being advocates for public education. Um, and just a few tips that I've learned over the years uh is when you, when you talk to elected officials, like they have five thousand bills that are out there, so know your stuff. Don't go in and say, I have a question about House Bill thirty-five sixteen. Say you have a question about the House bill, about our cell phones in the classrooms or the school districts. Just be informed about knowing what your stuff. Um, that helps them know where you're coming from. It also helps if you're a voter in their, their area. So if you're a constituent, you're gonna be a little more likely to be hurt. Um, and then just tell your story, just be authentic, just how it impacts you and how you envision it could impact. And um, but ultimately, if you're down at Capitol, it's just like in our offices. The more you're polite and professional and cordial to those individuals, uh, the more likely you're gonna be hurt. If you come in with your finger pointing and you're trying to dress them down, you're not gonna get very far. And you, you get a lot further with uh trying to find some common ground and we're all here trying to make this world a better place. So. That's what I, I try to, sorry, I'm getting carburetor de-cold. Um, so it's just good to be down there to make sure that you're advocating for good stuff there. Hey, just a few updates on district stuff. That's enough state stuff. What's happening in your local district? Um, new football coach is on the agenda tonight. Uh, Justin Rowland has accepted a principal and is pending your guys' approval. Um, and if, if you do approve that, we'll start a head boys wrestling search. Um, Jennifer's been busy with career fairs at neighboring universities and she was just at OSU for a speech pathology, speech pathologist um career fair. They do have a career fair for that. I'm very specialized, but uh, we'll hire every one of them if they'll choose to come work with us. But um, other than that, she goes, she goes over to Northwestern and other colleges to try to get as many teachers as we can up here. We, it is starting to become retirement season and some personnel moves. Uh, I did look back at this time last year. We're in much better shape with this year, this timeline than we were last year at this time. So. Um, I don't know if that's a sign to come or if people are just holding on to that decision. I hope it's, it's that we're maybe kind of leveling out here on filling spots. But I think moving into a number of different service enhancements, some of the stuff that our team's discussing that I think could have implications in our community. Um, one is we're really exploring how we can bring an arts education course back to this community. Uh, we've identified that that could be a potential barrier for either kids getting to school or getting to work. Uh, we are just in the very early phases of exploring this. Um, you know, we've talked about it in committees. Uh, my goal is to have something to you, uh, this board for approval either in March or April, so we can get it advertised to the community. If we can make, pull this off, that we can do something this summer for it. I think it's long overdue and I think there's a lot of merits. And um, the P, the circles I talked to and even from you all here, that it's a service that we think could have a lot of merit for our community. One of the other things we're looking at are mandatory pre-K screenings for Washington pre-K. Um, you know, as a public school, we take all kids. But when we have pre-K, we have really no background knowledge on the students, where they've come from, what challenges they may have, what issues, how can we best serve them? And if we have mandatory pre-K screening approved by this board, I think we would have some information that can help distribute our children more equally, equitably to create uh the best learning environment possible as the first day of school rolls around. But we don't have that hammered out yet, but we're still, we're still talking about that. The opioid grant, we had a special session, special meeting about this back in October where we approved being able to apply for that. Um, I'm pleased to admit or say the Attorney General has agreed to let us apply for the grant. Those grants are gonna be due um in March. So we should have something to this board um before then. Obviously, one of the things that we're looking at is there's a partnership opportunity with City Pong City where you can leverage, partner with other organizations. The city's also been approved career recipient. So we're looking at, is there an opportunity to coordinate and try to maximize those funds to create something that's lasting impact in our community? So we're exploring that.
Is that a state or federal?
This is a state. Um, it's a state pool of money that came from suing each of the pharmaceutical companies for the opioid pain. Uh, epidemic pain, I don't know what it's called. Um, we got, uh, supposedly over the next fifteen years, we're supposed to get several billion dollars coming into this fund. And so uh, there'll be a lot of opportunity. This is the first round, I think, for the, for like Pong, the City Pong City Public School District can combine up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to apply for a grant. So. Uh, right now we kind of identified maybe transportation as a possible, and you have to, right, a grant that tried to address opioid crisis and one of the things. We were looking at transportation treatment centers or um, it's really narrow on what you can do. You can't use it for like school resource officers. You can't use it for basically buy. You can do some sort, but you can't have the current council. So you gotta have, they don't have to be specialized in just opioid addiction or.
The effects of.
Yeah. Uh, so we think that might be a little narrow focus for what we can do at the high schools. So these are professionals out there that can help transport them to it. It's, I think, probably what we're looking at right now. Um, with that. Speaking for myself, superintendent's training, I am done with all of the COSA stuff, except I have to do the summer COSA workshop in June. Uh, if I do attend that, then I graduate and I can continue being a superintendent. So if you don't want to be superintendent, just block me out and go into that in June. And I'm out. Duh. But uh, that's the last darn thing for it. And I see you whispering over there, Judy. Um, I was invited to speak to all the aspiring new superintendents um in March, kind of about my first year, the do's and don'ts. I guess more of the don'ts, but uh, no, I'm, it's a neat opportunity to speak with them uh about just how the first year's gone. Um, for, they really wanna talk about board relationships and communication. Um, I, I was really honored that they invited me to speak on that. I, I respect their leadership, which Judy shoots one of the board members of. So. Uh, you must have pulled some strings or you talked me up, Judy, I guess. And then I'm excited, I'm most excited about this, and Judy did pull some strings with this. Our OSSBA Region Three meeting is on April eleventh here at the High School Commons. And we will tour Dean Anderson when it's completed um by that date. Right, Jason?
Correct.
Absolutely. Maintenance operations, if you haven't been driving around, you might see our lawns. This is a mistake I learned from last year. We're gonna have the, we're having all the weeds sprayed right now and getting pretty emergent now. So it'd help be, make it a little easier on our lawn maintenance over the spring and summer. Um, our uh temporary walls in the lower retro for temporary classrooms, this is part of the relocation of the fine arts classrooms underneath the retro cafeteria for the remainder of the school year, starting after spring break. That's getting ready to go down, go be installed as we speak. We did have some water lines that busted under solvents that not beat free, so we have. All that material's been delivered, so we're gonna get those repaired and done. And then Jason and his team has put out the bidding documents um for summer lawn care. That's gonna be talked about in next month's property meeting and brought to this board for approval um on that. Or we can just. Uh, what's that?
Next yard here in a week or so.
On the water lines that are solvents?
Yeah.
Uh, the, right now we have the water turned off. So yeah, it's gonna impact until we get it fixed, but it should be a pretty quick fix. Yeah, yeah. On that. So there are other restaurants that can utilize. It's just the ones underneath the solvents, uh, the locker room area that, that had it. But I don't, we've just gotta get it fixed now. So. Um, and then all curriculum federal programs, math textbook adoption, we're sending groups to Ena and the Marmal, um, to the math textbook caravan and hear pitches from different companies. Um, internally, we're looking at school supply list. One, I think we just need to do a, a better job of cutting that down if we can on what's, what we're requiring parents to send kids. But also we're looking at, is there a way that we can utilize some other additional funds that we have um to help uh make sure our teachers have the equipment they need to, or the supplies they need, maybe lowering that burden on families for the next school year. Just exploring it, not committing to it, just exploring. And then we're also doing our we the testing moving forward. That's our language test for our accountability report card. This is a, a potential calendar. This is a calendar that you guys are gonna be looking at and reviewing and either approving or not approving. Uh, not much has changed on this outside of picking the days of which uh we're gonna have our breaks. Um, you know, the important thing to look at on our calendar, new teacher orientation would be August twelfth and fourteenth with teachers reporting on the fifteenth and are doing our state required professional development on Friday the sixteenth. Giving the teachers the two customary workdays that we've always sort of been done on nineteenth and twentieth, with students reporting Wednesday, um, August twenty-first. That's a few days earlier than we did this year. Um, I thought it was important for us to start on Wednesday for a number of reasons. One is there's just no activities on Wednesdays. So we have, when we started on Thursday this year, we had softball out, cross-country out. Um, and so we had substitute teachers on the first day of school, kids were missing the first day of school and teachers were missing the first day of instruction. So uh, it just didn't make sense to me to have school on a day where we had activities. I think the important, the first day is very important to get those rules, procedures, policies communicated, set the tone for the school year and get going. So having those people there on the twenty-first, on Wednesday would be great. Fall break's a little earlier, but um, that's the eleventh and fourteenth. We're proposing the same week on Thanksgiving, um, on, on the Thanksgiving breaks. Winter break would be full twenty through December, or January sixth. Spring break would be March seventeen through the twenty-first. With last day of school being uh Thursday, five sixteen, I'm sorry, Friday, that should be Friday, the sixteenth, not Thursday.
All break to spend all the other schools.
Yes, yeah. So what we, we try to do is we, we share that with our career tech partners and our other schools and say, this is not board approved, but these are the days we're looking at and that we think will work for our community. And we try to align those to the best of our ability on that. Um, same number, uh, teacher uh workdays, student contact days. Um, so I'd be happy to take any questions over that if you have any. Oh, we also have two buildings, some days, the twenty-first and the eighteenth of April, which we used one this year for a school year. Um, which I think may have some changes that we can't do, if the virtual school bill goes through and they say you can't use it for extreme weather. But I'm certain that's also have that as provision. We're definitely gonna do that. So. Any questions for me?
The question I had was, was there any discussion um that you've heard of on the bills that have to do with the A to F accountability changes in way of parent accountability? The size of attendance?
The only thing right now is just the, the attendance part, I would say, would be for the, the parent accountability piece. Um, you know, we've even talked about the A through F report card. I think it was just a total redesign where you put out these measures, the school. It almost similar to accreditation. Are you, is your school open to parent meetings? Do you have parentage conferences? Do you, are you promoting your school? You know, are you, are you providing these assessments? Are you providing these services? Cause really the accountability report card should be how effective is your school serving your community? I mean, really that's what we're here for. We're here to educate.
Right now, as a sample, I'll come to it on that one.
As a snapshot, it's a snapshot on a, any given day in April on how your kids are gonna test. Um, with, there's a little bit with elementary where there's growth added for, is there improvement from one year to the next, which I'm a big growth believer. I think our district's a big believer in growth. You can't control where you get them, but you can control if you improve them. You can't control where you get them, but you can control if you improve them. And I do think that that's an important measure for us. But yeah, honestly, and really just attendance is what seems to be the hot topic right now. And then no one really has a good idea. You know, we are funded partly based off attendance, right? Average daily attendance, average daily membership, all matters to school district. But it seems like in a post COVID world that either that attendance mindset has shifted a little bit or kids are more sick. I don't know. It's just, it's hard to figure out how to thread that needle and get kids in the seats. I think, just personally speaking, I think it's just more of a be able to show that you have a robust curriculum, a strong curriculum. Other states have done it. And I think the reason the state chambers behind it is a lot of big industry and business would support showing or saying. So that's, it's just a fourth map. What the way it's currently going is they want to leave it up to the local board to decide what the fourth map would be. It could be a contextual map, which I learned a lot about today. It could be something where it's math and the construction industry or it could be a, I mean, it could be anything this board qualifies as a fourth map. Personal finance. So they're kind of leaving it up to local control on what a fourth map would be.
Does anyone have any questions for Adam? Thank you, Adam.
All right, thank you.
That's all right, it was very good. Item number six is the consent agenda, a motion to override the approval of the consent agenda is granted or ceded. Board members may have a call for a separate vote on any or all items listed upon the consent agenda. Looked at the minutes from the January fifteenth, twenty twenty four regular Board of Education meeting. The contracts and agreements under ten thousand and a surplus resolution. Okay, a motion? Judy's made a motion for approval. Seconded by Don. Any discussion or questions? Call for the vote. Item seven, action items with a motion required. Item one is to consider and take action on the faulty district financial reports listed there, A through O. Any comments made in motion for approval? Seconded by Don. Any discussion or questions? Call for the vote. Item two, consider taking action on receiving annual auto report from Jenkins and Kimper. Motion to approve by Don. Seconded by Judy. Any discussion or questions? Thank you to the team. It's always good to get it from the other, but thank you. Call for the vote. Item three, consider taking action on the city's school district calendar for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. And have Dr. Alra in his update, but we also have it listed there and Jennifer, I have his thirty answering motions. Judy's made a motion for approval? Seconded. Seconded by Don. Any discussion or question? Anna Rowland? Aye. Don Nizam? Aye. Robin Riley? Aye. Judy Truitt? Item number four, consider taking action on declaring March fourth, twenty twenty four as Re-Across America Day in Pong City fellow schools. Motion to approve by Don. Seconded by Judy Truitt. Any discussion or questions? Always a fun week. Call for the vote. Judy Truitt? Aye. Anna Rowland? Aye. Robin Riley? Aye. Don Nizam? Aye. Item five, consider taking action on bond authorization for Assistant Treasurer, Covern's Park and Air specialists positions in Equina and W Men's Park. And there's some names listed there for you guys to review. Don's made a motion for approval by Don. Seconded by Judy. Any discussion or questions? Call for the vote. Judy Truitt? Aye. Don Nizam? Aye. Robin Riley? Aye. Anna Rowland? Aye. Item six, consider taking action on change order number two to firearm upgrade and multiple sites for works across construction. This change orders for the return of unused contingency funds and the amount's twenty nine thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Jason, let us hear any questions in the house. Okay, a motion? I'll take a motion for approval for item six. Seconded by Don. Any discussion or questions? Call for the vote. Robin Riley? Aye. Judy Truitt? Don Nizam? Aye. Anna Rowland? Aye. Item seven, consider taking action on following contracts and agreements. Item A through D, go over all of them before we vote, but you may go ahead and make your question of a little sloppy. A is a quote from Harrison Energy Partners to replace the rooftop units at West Middle School. The cost is two hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars and we'll talk about it seven ninety five S R three.
I have a question on that one.
Yes.
When we had property meeting, we talked about the extra hundred thousand dollars that nobody got back to me. Is that, is it, what do we do with the extra hundred? Or do we need to buy more rooftop units to make sure we use the S R money?
That, some of that S R money in there has already been encumbered. I don't believe it's a full one hundred thousand dollars extra that we have.
How much is it?
What I based it off of was the two hundred ninety, it was two hundred and twenty thousand, I believe, left over in the S R funds when we closed out the Liberty project. And one other project we closed out. And so that P O was written for a little bit more than what it was supposed to be. But once we closed that out, we had roughly two hundred and twenty thousand left.
So you're saying that extra hundred thousand has all been.
Yes, as far as I know, because we still have the thirty thousand dollar intercom system going into the number eight that hasn't been done yet.
You agree with that, Eric?
It wasn't encumbered as of the financing.
Which part?
The hundred thousand wasn't encumbered yet. I should.
That was a question I brought up to the finance committee.
So we have, we don't have to have that spent until September? We have time.
So what's the delivery on these rooftop units?
Eight weeks.
I mean, I don't care whether we buy rooftop units. I just want to make sure.
We will spend it.
We use the hundred thousand dollars though.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's, that's all I'm asking.
Now we know we have lots of support, but yeah, we have, we will have a plan for if we have that.
Can S R, I use way?
Can, it'd be, Davis Bacon wages out.
Well, but the two nineteen, does that include the regular engines?
No, it does not. That is just the product only.
That's just twenty session units coming in.
So what do we estimate the installation to be on that?
It would be building fun installation. What's that?
I've been told eight weeks.
Yeah, we had, we had Harrison, right. We had Harrison Energy bring in their installers. They're under state procurement, state contracts. And so they did an analysis for our controls through our computer systems. And so we can operate that from our maintenance department. So they're looking at controls, rooftop curbs, and all the refrigeration lines, everything. So we're waiting on the quote back for that.
Questions or discussion for A? Good question, Robyn, thank you. B, a quote from Peatley Nursery for trees at the softball complex. The cost is for a total of twenty five thousand three hundred coming from the building fund. Item C, an agreement with Redriver Gasket LLC, Gasket Guy of Oklahoma for repair replacement of child nutrition equipment. Costs us up to ten thousand dollars coming from C and E fund. Item D, a proposal for Rick Scott Construction Incorporated for repairs of child elementary related to the verse sprinkler line. Total cost is twenty one thousand six hundred fifty three dollars. Did I take any motion on A through D?
I make a motion to approve. Item seven, make the D. E.
Don's made a motion for approval? Seconded by Judy. Any discussion or questions, Robyn? Robin Riley? Aye. Don Nizam? Aye. Judy Truitt? Anna Rowland? Aye. Item eight, motion and vote to convene a session for the valid purposes to discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, employment, personally attached detailed personal report to discuss the employment of executive directors and managers, and to discuss confidential conversation of the board's attorney between pending classification. Is there a recommendation?
At this hour, I have a little update for the board that would be relevant at this time. So if the board has something that's come up.
You may understand a motion for, to consider this. We don't want to make a motion.
Well, you can call for a motion if there's no motion, that is.
Hearing that, moving on to item ten, recite by the board president. Item ten, consider taking action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation of personnel. That would be the motion to approve. Seconded by Robin Riley. Any discussion or questions? Call for the vote. Judy Truitt? Anna Rowland? Aye. Robin Riley? Aye. Don Nizam? Aye. Any business smart? Okay, carry on. Call for a German? So move.